I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is this here for some reason?
Yeah.
Someone must stand that close to me.
More sound.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have to spread light on it.
Okay, so honorations, we have thirty listings, fifteen thousand, seven hundred, two dollars and twenty-four cents for tax shares, two thousand and eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Food share orders for August twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen, minutes of June five, two thousand and thirteen. Pay vouchers, general time fund, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five sixty ninety-two. Cole Severance Fund, thirty-nine thousand, three thirty-nine before, nine-one-one, one thousand and two eighty-two forty-five. Assistors valuation fund, four forty-six fifty-seven. Morgantown Industrial Tip, twenty thousand, nine sixty-eight fifty-seven, with total of two eighty-nine, five eighty-nine forty-five. I have no bonds, I do have budget revisions for county extension agent, county commission for Camp Muffley, and also the Westside Senior Center. On the Camp Muffley, I've moved the salary of the superintendent up to the salary line items. That leaves a balance of seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars of their three quarters that we've been giving them. Do you want to make an order that that be maintained here and submit their bills to us directly beginning immediately? Or do you want me to quarter that and send it to them in thirds?
I, I think due to the change in structure, that the advisory board, which is what they are now, we just haven't officially have a document to support that at this point, but will have. They, they really shouldn't be managing a budget. They can suggest, they can recommend, but I think approval of funding expenditure funds should come from admission.
Yeah, I'll also move that funds stay here and then they send purchase orders or request orders here. So I so move.
Second.
Have a motion, second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Is that a motion for everything?
Well, that was just for the Camp Muffley, yeah.
And we need to talk about their, they have a fund that they make deposits into. Similar to what Chestnut Ridge Camp does and Mason Dixon Park. They bring those receipts in, there is a separate Chestnut Ridge Park Fund, but there's not a separate Mason Dixon Park Fund. If we want them all equal, we should probably have three accounts, one for each park. When the receipts come in, they directly go into the account for the park rather than coming into the general fund and having it be maintained so that we know how much they're taking in.
Does that take a motion?
So we can set that up.
Well, if you just, can you just set it up and just, we're just moving that we have three separate accounts for the three parks.
I'll second, we have three separate accounts.
Now, a motion, second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Funds.
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 Right now, we have a Chestnut Ridge Fund, one for Mason Dixon Park Fund, and Camp Muffley.
The other, the other thing concerns me a little bit about Camp Muffley is, and it was alluded to when the superintendent talked to us about the chair purchase, is, is contributions that are coming to them under the guise of 4H camp. And I, and I think what we need to do is, for the record, we need to set straight that contributions that come in for the 4H camp, whether or not, and I think this is probably something that needs defined, I'm sure from their perception and their definition, that contributions come to the 4H camp are contributions made to them as a little board, so called. I think you could just much more defend that, that contributions that come in to the 4H camp are intended for the 4H camp, not who's on the board.
It's Camp Muffley.
So, yeah, it's Camp Muffley. So I, I think we need to get that clarified, that anyone that makes charitable contributions needs to be aware of what they're doing and who they're giving it to. Because if, if what we heard last Wednesday was correct, fifty-two thousand dollars went into a different direction and was expended. And we need to make sure that that doesn't happen for any, any donors that are under the impression that they're donating to the 4H camp or to Camp Muffley. Because from this point on, donations are going to a board that really doesn't exist anymore as far as we're concerned. There is no more little board and there's a so-called big board, Camp Muffley Board, that exists only if we decide to give the park up. That's their only role in this whole process. So I, I think we need to set the record straight, that we appreciate any contributions to the park and certainly if there's contributions made for the 4H programs, that's where they should go and we should see that they go there. But we can't have, I think, public members donating to a 4H camp board that doesn't exist anymore.
Would it be best to put it on the agenda next week, not on the work session? That would be to clarify these issues, because you brought up several issues, not only about the funding, but also about the board and if we want to probably make a clarification, do we want to dissolve the board as is now and then have another board, which, you know, would be the advisory board, and allow those individuals to apply again? That would be my recommendation, to put it on the agenda the next.
We did that last year.
But, but for clarification of those specific issues.
Well, we didn't put anything on the agenda for clarification. There was a motion made, I think Commissioner Bartolo made the motion, he made the motion that the board was hence dissolved. You seconded it, and that it was, that they could apply for addition for, for the advisory board if they want to. That's my recollection.
I don't think it was to dissolve it.
Just a second, I have a recommendation. Bill, do you recall that making that motion, sir?
I think we have, we have Renetta and Jambi working on revision in the bylaws that'll address those issues. And, yeah, I did make a motion to that effect.
And it was passed.
The makeup of the advisory board, we didn't really define, but one of the things in us here sitting back there is, and I think this would be appropriate, is in the bylaws, I'd like to make sure that the 4H representative is a ongoing permanent member of that advisory board. One of the things I think we need to do in the community is to, to demonstrate that we support 4H programs, regardless of what you may hear from other sources. And we want 4H actively involved in, in that camp and, and we support it.
You have a name?
But I'm still, I thought when we, we made the board that was going to be advisory, but there was clarification that that's why we were putting them in the, having them rewrite the information so we could get it clear about not only the board members and making it a new board, but also about the funding. That's why when they have, when they have a finished writing, then we need to put it on the agenda, which would be fine with me.
Yeah, we'll bring it to a work session.
Yeah, then bring it to a work, then that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine with me then, okay.
All right. We need a motion on the exoneration, fiduciary orders, minutes, purchase orders, budget revisions.
Move for approval, exoneration, fiduciary orders, and the other information you mentioned.
Second.
Have a motion, the second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passed. Renetta.
Just have one item today. Along with a resolution for a contract for the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program for the Mon County Solid Waste Authority. Contract, I'll read the, or read the resolution. Be resolved that the Montague County Commission hereby authorizes the Honorable Eldon A. Callan, President of the Montague County Commission, to act on its behalf by signing the contract for the West Virginia Development Office. In order to receive and administer grant funds pursuant to the provisions of the Community Participation Grant Program, funds in the amount of two thousand dollars are requested for the Montague County Solid Waste Authority to assist with the installation of a satellite recycling site.
Move for approval of the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion, the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Renetta. Okay, we don't have anything on correspondence, or do we get any correspondence in?
Actually, yes, we did.
Okay.
Today, just today, I received a phone letter from Paul Maddox, Secretary of Transportation. Thank you for your letter to Mr. Marvin Murphy, dated July twenty-four, two thousand and thirteen, regarding the Montague County Commission proposing the sale of the Hartman Run Bridge to the West Virginia Division of Highways. It is our intention to accept your proposal for both the funding schedule and the ownership of the bridge into the West Virginia State Highway System. An agreement will be prepared to formalize the proposal and each party's actions as stated. Additionally, it will require the West Virginia DOH to take ownership of a section of Saberton Avenue from the bridge south to West Virginia Seven. This will require whoever owns that section to turn the title over to DOH. It is hoped that the project can go to contract later this year. We appreciate your cooperation and assistance in moving this project forward.
Thank you, thanks, DOH. That's only taken twenty years since, twenty-one years actually, since nineteen ninety-two, when it was first proposed that the DOH take over that bridge. So that, that's quite an accomplishment. I, I think we ought to go ahead and finish painting it though.
I would, I would anticipate that they'll, the new construction will go around the old structure. And from what I read in correspondence, it'll take two years to build that bridge.
At least.
So from now until the time of construction, maybe a year, so we could be looking as much as three years. So we don't have to look at rusty rails on the bridge, particularly people live in that neighborhood, so.
I agree.
I think it's going to be a tremendous plus for the appearance in that neighborhood. One of the things I would like to do is propose that we, we immediately refer this to Phil Magro and tell him to do whatever he needs to do to draw up the transfer of deed to the State Department of Highways.
Yes, and there's a person that works on with deeds, I'm sure he knows who it is, I've dealt with before. There might be something, you might give him a heads up on this. It seems to me that there's a interest held on one side or the other of that bridge that's held by City of Morgantown or the MUB. So we need to get that clarified too, so that's not a hangup. But I, I think City of Morgantown may own one side and MUB sort of owns the other side where they have sewage and water gone through, has access, so. I'm, I'm sure he knows what to do, I just thought I'd save him some looking up time.
Okay, I'll, I'll mention that in a letter to him, to the MUB of the city. And also I have a letter that, I think you've gotten a copy of this, from Piper Jaffray. They are the placement agent for the bond issue, the ballpark.
Yes.
And this is a, just acknowledgement that you've received this disclosure letter that they sent to us last week, so I've made a copy for each of us.
They want me to sign that I acknowledge it? What do you acknowledge it? Oh. Okay. That makes sense, we need a motion for this? A motion that I signed, that my agent received.
Move for approval, authorize the President to sign.
Second. Have a motion, the second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Any other correspondence? Oh, that reminds me of something. Maybe I missed it last week or something. Did we get something from Tim Ball on Pocono Run?
No. They're going, that group is going to come in, I believe, the eleventh of September. As a result of the meeting that they have at the Health Department, they're doing a slide presentation and they're going to be on a work session.
Okay, he, I saw him this morning and he told, he advised me that about a week and a half ago, he sent us copies of engineering plans to how to resolve that situation. Four different options. And I told him that we certainly would welcome that. I was, I didn't know whether it came the week, week I wasn't here or not, is what I was asking. Okay, we can follow up on that.
Sure.
Okay, unfinished business, appointment of Lisa Spears to Chestnut Ridge Park Board. Is Lisa here? Okay, she doesn't have to be here, I just wanted to recognize who she was. We, we've interviewed her, she's good contribution, I'm very pleased with, with the advertising and the promotion and everyone knows that they have a fair shot on the boards. I'm very pleased with the way that's been working with, for now, a year and a half or, we adopted it a year and a half ago. And I think, it's my opinion, she's a good candidate for that board.
I'll move for approval, Lisa Spears to the Chestnut Ridge Park Board.
I'll second.
Have a motion, the second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passed.
That term will expire March five, two thousand and sixteen. Are you still serving on the board?
I, I stepped aside some time ago, do I need to get a formal written resignation?
Well, if you are no longer serving, we still have, then, two vacancies.
I think it's better that I'm not, given that, that we are standardized and everything. I think it's better that Commissioner does not serve on that board. That was part of how we came up with the whole program, is me serving on some of these boards and realizing the inconsistencies and the waste because of the inconsistencies. That's why we came up with this whole new program last year.
Okay, so we, we have one applicant, but there are two positions then, to make a full board.
We got one more applicant?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we got more openings, so I appreciate if you keep promoting, if they can come to look at the website and see what boards they could serve on, we'd really, really like the public participation. Thank you. Purchases, Camp Muffley. The, I, I was called the day after last week by Dave McCormick, who's part of the company that provides government contract services and supplies. And he, he told me that he certainly understood why we would question the, the chair, the issue on the chairs. But that, but that it was a government contract and he, and he emailed me the documentation and all to show that everything is done legally and above board. So in terms of their purchase, the, it is proven, it's been since proven that that's not an illegal purchase. That still doesn't excuse the fact that the board, to my knowledge, had the money to pay for these chairs when they purchased them, then went out and spent it on other things without first even consulting with us. Now, we have, people that know me know that I treat everybody with respect and kindness, that's just the way I am. But I, I don't like to be beat around, I don't like to be put on a spot. And that's the problem. It's not so much that we are spouting with anyone, we are asking them, and we've invited them, to come and sit down and talk with us and speak with us and go through this whole process. And basically, they've snubbed us until we decided to take action and we went ahead and took action. And then they came in and they started screaming, "Holler, you don't communicate with us." Well, we tried to communicate with them. The fact of the matter is, Camp Muffley belongs to the taxpayers of this county. And because someone spends twenty years, fifty years, a hundred and fifty years, working on government property does not mean that they own that property. Does not mean they own the property. We don't have squatters rights in this currently. And as Commissioner Bartolo said earlier, we are adamant supporters of 4H, adamant supporters of 4H. We want to see it do more than what it's doing, we want to help it do more than what it's doing. But that does not mean that we give away taxpayers' property because someone's threatens to respond politically or attack us politically. We are trying to do what is the right thing for the citizens of this county and what is in their best interest. We're open and respectfully request people to come and talk to us. Carrying on and putting up websites with lies on them doesn't do anything, it just degenerates little thing. That's one thing that Bill and I, for the last two years, have, have been very strong and adamant about, is our, our commitment to openness and transparency and truth. People can make mistakes, but they, you gotta, you gotta start with the truth. People, I can accept anything, people can accept anything if you start with the truth. If you don't, if you can't start with that, then either something's wrong with you or something, or you really need some help, so. I just really strongly believe that what we are doing is in the, is in the long run going to make 4H stronger and make Camp Muffley stronger and more useful for the citizens. That's my position on, on, on Camp Muffley and... Bill?
The comment I have is the episode with the chairs. We need to put closure on that. And my recommendation is, is I would move that we refer the question to Phil Magro, our legal counsel. Since we have clarified that it was not an illegal purchase. Now we want to know is what our legal responsibility is for paying for the chairs. They're now at the Camp Muffley, they have been used, it will continue to be used. And I just think we need some legal guidance on, do we have a responsibility to pay for those chairs? And let's do it, let's pay for it and move on. If we have, do not have a legal responsibility to pay for those chairs and if we have an option of returning them to the manufacturer, then I think we need to talk about whether we would want to do that or not. I'm not suggesting that we do that, but I think we need to talk about that if that is one of our options. If it's not, and we have an obligation to pay for the chairs, then I think we need to put it back on the agenda and pay for those chairs and erase that from the Talk About Board.
Tom?
So that's my, I would move that we, we have a motion.
I'll second, but with reservation, and I'll explain why. I think the longer we keep this open, I think no one's winning right now. And, and my concern is, except the newspaper, who's enjoying, you know, making it a controversy. I, I don't see anything wrong with getting a final opinion of what we have to do, but the bottom line is, we're going to have to make a decision about how we're going to finance the chairs one way or the other, to pay for them. My question is, and I guess it's a question I, I could ask Mr. Doyle, one of the concerns I have heard is that the chairs are destroying the floor. Now, that's my, is that correct, that there's a problem with the?
Scratching them.
The scratching them. So again, that, that's the other concern that I have, is if we buy them, then we put them in and it's used, then it scratches up the floor, then we have another problem. So again, you know, it was what, thirty-six thousand dollars? I'd like to see how much money they actually have. I think, did she say they had thirty thousand to pay for it or? So I mean, maybe we just paid the difference. And that's, could be another one of our options. But I'd like to put, put it to closure and then just move on. And I think next week, or whenever they come and with the bylaws, we can resolve this issue, move on and deal with other issues to make, you know, the park, the all three parks, you know, successful. And, and the big concern I have is that the phone calls I've received have actually been in favor of our position, which is, I didn't realize that the park was for everyone. And I think that's the big, that's what we're trying to make sure. And I think Eldon was trying to get that real clear, that, that, you know, we're very pleased that 4H is there, we want them to stay there, but we also want other people in the county to use the facility.
I am going to go along with referring to Phil, and I don't have to be long. So that eliminates, that eliminates my, my, taking the position, let's wait and see what Phil, Phil says on that. And I'm just going to stop there, I don't, don't have to be long. Have a motion, the second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, thank you. Okay. New business, request for funds, Scotts Run Community Park. Is anyone from Scotts Run Community Park here?
No.
No? Okay.
This is a letter from Patty Thomas. Annually, they have the Scotts Run Streets Fair, and they have asked for an appropriation this year of three thousand dollars to help them with some of their expenses. We have given them funding in the past, but they were not included in the budget.
They, this, this money would, would that come out of hotel motel tax?
No, General County Fund, or Cole Severance Fund, Parks Line item, there's five thousand in other.
Okay, so that's Parks Line item.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just wondering, I guess my question really is, is do we have a slot for a three thousand dollar contribution discovery?
Yes, we do.
From the parks?
I'll move that we support the three thousand dollars for the Scotts Run Community Park.
You know, this community has struggled to maintain its identity in more ways than one. I, I think that this street fair will help them do that, enable them to do that, and I'll second the motion to go ahead and grant them that three thousand dollars.
The, I agree with that, I think, I think the more community identity we can help promote, the better. And I, I've been to their street fair and it's a nice affair. I hope, hope this three thousand dollars can help them promote or get some promotion for their street fair. So I have a motion, the second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
The date of the fair is September twenty-first.
September twenty-first. And is there a contact, if, Ben or?
Patty Thomas or Nancy Coles.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Reports from County Commission. Bill?
Commissioner Bloom and I went out to the Tri-Union Seniors Meeting Monday evening. Made a little tour around the facility, that's one of the facilities that the county owns. That, actually considering the age of the facility, Bobby Doyle and his maintenance crew have done a remarkable job in maintaining that facility. The one thing that, I sort of became aware of some things, and I'm sure Tom has some comments, but, you know, as, as you look around there and particularly as you sit down and they remind you of how good home cooking is because they certainly serve some good food. So it's always good to get, get to be an invited guest, you missed out.
I called them, I hope they gave me my regards.
But, but you know, they are seniors and it pointed out, it's one of the things about cleaning the facility and some of the places that need cleaned and how appropriate is it for, expects a one ninety-one years old to get down on their knees and clean baseboards. So it pointed out some needs. It also pointed out some needs of some basic operational kinds of funding, which they really didn't categorize at that when they requested their budget. They did, did request that we reconsider that they received fifteen hundred dollars, I believe, in the budget allotment, and they had requested two thousand. And if there'd be any way possible that they could get that additional five hundred dollars. They, they worked very well as a group, at least it appeared that way. If they were going to fight and argue, they must have done it after we left. But you, you really have to appreciate when a community like that comes together and, and gets together, it's sort of like down home cooking and, and socializing. But I came back with a little list, Tom is familiar with that list, what that list is, I've shared that with Bobby. He's got the list to look at it and consider if we can help them out in any shape or fashion with some improvements that I thought would be an improvement. And Bobby was very receptive, as he always is, to constructive things. That's probably because he does, handles all the construction, but it was. That's probably cause he does, handles all the construction, but, uh, uh, it was, it was a worthwhile visit. And, and one of the things I'd like to do is see if we can't maybe enlist the services of Debbie. Cause one of the activities that came up was, uh, if we could, uh, do a little survey and find out how many of our community centers and senior centers have large screen TVs and DVD players. And maybe we could make a group purchase so that they can have, uh, family night or theater night at each of these, uh, facilities.
Superbowl.
Superbowl. Saturday's the football games, uh, so that we could bring in, actually what these facilities need is some little younger people who can help do some of the manual kinds of things in those facilities. Uh, and I think if we could get that kind of interaction started and bring together the, the seniors and the younger people, then I think the younger people would pitch in and jump in and help maintain those facilities. Uh, plus the mixture I think would be good. Uh, the younger could learn from the old and the old can say, go ahead, make the mistakes that I did. But, uh, it was worthwhile.
That's a good idea.
It's worthwhile. And that, if, if you all agree and, and we can get Debbie's, uh, cooperation, which I think we will, we can do a little survey and see how many out there and what it would cost. And then maybe Bobby could identify a source. We may be able to get, uh, a volume price on them, uh, which would lower our cost. But, uh, I think it would be very helpful to those, uh, locations and, and I don't even know if Camp Muffley has that capability, but-
Yeah, they could buy it.
Large screen TV and a DVD player?
Yeah.
But that, that would, uh, and, and maybe, I don't know if Mason Dixon has that capability or Chestnut Ridge, but-
No, neither one of those.
You know, that's, that's, uh, I think that tends to draw a mixture of people together.
I think that's a good idea and may I add to your, your suggestion that while she's doing this survey, maybe she could ask the kind of community type, and we have to compose it the right way, uh, the community type activities that they do or they would like to do. Sort of add to that survey if that would be okay.
Well, I think it's great. I mean, I think the more we could promote and support community activities like that and maybe even across the lines of the senior centers and the community centers, maybe two of them could go together and co-sponsor an event. Uh, you know, Camp Muffley certainly has facilities and, that you could draw in and, and have a larger group there.
Yeah.
But, uh, it was enlightening and enjoyable.
It's a good idea. Is that, that a motion to do a survey of the camps and all the centers?
Yes, I would make that motion.
I'll say.
I have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion pass. Do you have anything else?
No, that's all.
Tom?
Uh, yeah, to continue what Bill said, I, I think it was very enlightening that sometimes we take for granted, uh, where we live and the situation and what several of the senior centers had said that many of them, that was their only time that they got together to be with someone else. So it's a really important focal point of their community. And I think they were, first, they were extremely pleased that we were out there, um, and did come out there, which brings up a point that I was wondering if we should consider maybe once a year since we went there, somehow send a letter and several of us could go to the other senior centers, make it a date where we would go out there, talk with them in an informal basis. And I, I think that went so well, I, I would like to consider that again. It, I don't want to motion, but you know, just that we would consider talking with the other senior centers to go out there once a year to visit them. And I think that way, that, that really opens up the communication. Um, along that lines, I was just thinking outside the box and you were talking about help. I noticed, and I apologize, I forget your name, the representative from WVU, uh, you're, what's your name? I apologize.
Evan Dow.
Okay, Evan. Um, I, I had you down here, I was, I was gonna make a comment anyway, but possibility of if you could take back to the, uh, student government, and I know they also have a program where they do volunteer hours, that maybe we could set something up where they could go out there and like you said, some of the minor things of, you know, whether it's grass cutting, you know, or just minor things like that, we could work out a coordinated program. So if you could take that back to, to the group, I think that would be a real, uh, advantage point, not only for WVU and for the County Commission, but I think it would also open a nice bond between the students and the community.
It's an excellent, I will present it to the Board of Governors tonight.
Good. Oh, good. And in fact, if you're also gonna meet, I also wanted, I know you always take a lot of heat and I wanted to compliment you and Ryan Campion, the beginning of the school year has been exceptional and I think you all need, deserve credit for that. I know in the past we've had some rowdier times and I don't know whether it's the student government, whether it was a great Fall Fest program or just the maturity, but I, I, I think that the student government deserves credit and you know, you don't usually get that credit. So please take that back, um, to them. Also along that third lines, when, if you could send us a, when you have meeting times, because in the past we've shown up a couple of times and I think that would be good, where if you know, a couple of us wanted to show up and talk with you or if you had any suggestions, if you could get that to us.
We'll send it to you.
Okay. Thank you.
We appreciate it. We hope that Saturday will hopefully go well.
Yeah.
Just sorry.
And so, oh, sorry. Um, but yes, I, and I think so, but again, I, I did want to congratulate, but I think, you know, sometimes when you have, uh, the media, you only want to promote the negative and I thought it was e- extremely well. Also we need to say that, you know, and I don't want to say not only two county commissioners are there, but we had the representatives, um, Mark, Mark Music was there and Cliff. But you know, represent, and what was nice is they were there and well received. Usually when people, you know, quote a tax session, you, you have a negative and they were very well received. And I think that's what's going on in the community. I think the people are starting to see we are doing things and it's working well and I think the more we work together, I think, you know, we can really move this, uh, county forward. So that's my political statement. And that's it.
I wanted to take, uh, another opportunity to thank Bill, uh, for the Hartman Run Bridge. That's a tremendous idea.
And pass that along to Bobby.
Well, that, that's, that's your humility, but it was your idea and you asked the question and I, I thought it was an excellent idea. And I, I think, uh, I, I've heard some criticism about why would you paint a bridge that you're gonna tear down?
I, I heard that myself this morning. I didn't want to comment on that, although I was tempted, but I didn't.
Well, ju- the first thing I thought was, uh, you know, just because you're, you need to take your car to mechanic, doesn't mean you don't wash it. You know, you don't keep it clean. I mean, it's, it's foolish. Uh, it's gonna be, like you said, maybe another two years or three years. I mean, it's been 21 years.
I, I thought I'd send an article to that person on, uh, how to construct a bridge and the headline would read "Not Overnight."
Uh, that's right. And then, uh, and another, uh, another interesting fact, and we're gonna try to follow up that, and I heard that from Darryl Bobby, uh, was that, uh, a gentleman from WVU stopped over there, over there that was an engineer, engineer architect or something, who had the entire history of the bridge and actually says that that bridge, uh, could and should be restored. So that will be between him and the Department of Highways, but, uh, just as long as we don't have to worry about it anymore.
Okay, next week, we're not even gonna talk about it.
That's it.
Yeah. Uh, the other thing, uh, troubles me to even bring up, but I feel like I have to and it's, that's Mingo County. But I've, I've given a lot of thought about Mingo County and, uh, you know, I'm very proud of our county and the things that our county's done. And, you know, the thing that I keeps kicking around about Mingo County that disturbs me is not so much that you have a bad commissioner or allegedly bad commissioner. Uh, what disturbs me is what the other two commissioners are doing. Those Commissioner Hubbard and Commissioner Smith, I know, I've met all three of them. Or are they doing? Uh, were they too afraid of his political power to speak out when things weren't right? Were they, they too, uh, uh, were they too, tried to be too much of a gentleman and, and not speak the truth and paint some sort of veil for the people in Mingo County? Uh, that's one thing that, uh, Bill and I, uh, have been adamant about since I've been here. Um, and we've worked very closely together. I've already alluded to that. But that, that gravely concerns me, uh, because, uh, he needed a second vote to stop buying tires from the tire company. That's scary. And just because, and I, and I'm not, I'm not an optimist or a pessimist, I'm, I'm a realist. Just because our county is doing well and prospering should give no one the thought for a second that similar things could happen in this county. And it takes diligence and it takes courage. And, uh, I've get, I, I've just, I've just thought a lot about that and I keep kicking around. And since I'm not being a lawyer right now, I won't make, give you my commentary on the judge, which would take you another 30 minutes, but, uh, that, that, that conduct by a judge is outrageous, but it, it takes diligence and truth. You know, I make mistakes. People can make mistakes. They can say things and, uh, not be right. But falsehoods, untruths, just, we can't live with that. And the best cleaner in the world is sunshine. That's why it's transparency, transparency is so important. Uh, I believe so strongly in the media. Uh, media can be hoodwinked sometimes and they write stories that aren't true or don't do their diligence to make sure that they are true. Uh, but, uh, I'm not condemning the media. They do the best job they can, they're on a timeline. But it really, uh, my, my reading of this story in Mingo County, it didn't even, none of that stuff, all that stuff that's going on, I guess there's a whole bunch more going on in that county, uh, that never even appeared in the paper, the way it's been in the paper. Not, not a word. So that, that's, that's troubling. Um, I have, uh, I mentioned, uh, Tim Ball, he told me that he has, uh, four different plans to deal with Popeno. Uh, and, uh, he's gonna send over and share with them. I don't know how much our participation would, would be in that. Uh, I did, I did explain to him that, you know, if we got a note, it was, I didn't get any notice, uh, of, of the meeting and, uh, that, uh, if we got notice here in the county, it was like the day before. So, uh, that, that is not really an issue anymore, but I think we need to, to work on that and do that. Uh, the, I, I went to the senior center and get a lot of meetings and, and, uh, things are coming along. I th- I think we may need to, uh, have another communications meeting here shortly. Um, the, uh, we got, uh, we got new officers and we were at the senior center, we had, uh, Commissioner Roswell and Linda Pascal from the regional area, they were both there. Uh, I think, I think things are coming along. I think, uh, slow and even work will, they haven't been solved yet, but you know, it's, we're, we're working on it. So I, I'll keep, uh, the commissioners updated as, uh, the issues as we go along. Um, this is probably the hardest thing that I have to do, but I feel, uh, absolutely necessary to do it since I publicly scolded the school board and, uh, school administration. Uh, I went to my deposition last Friday, they questioned me over four and a half hours. Uh, they also showed me that, um, they absolutely did not, uh, schedule the meetings, uh, and that, that fact that they did try to schedule the meetings around Wednesday was not the school board or their attorney. So I publicly apologize of criticizing. I didn't talk to the school board or to the, or to the, uh, administration because I knew they were gonna depose me and they definitely questioned for quite some time, uh, my prior communications with them. Uh, but I do publicly apologize that it was not true that they, that they were, uh, insisting that the meetings be held on Wednesday. And the last thing in the same vein, and this is for the employees here, regardless of what appeared in the paper, there is no reorganization of, of the, this county. The reorganization that was done was done over a year and a half ago. The charts and things that we, those filled out was re- merely a reflection, uh, to help Commissioner Bloom understand is how the commission worked. The only personality problems in this county, because I felt that it was degrading to every employee and every department and every public official, the only personality problems existed here on this commission. It is just totally improper to degrade these employees, like someone has to come in and save them from this, uh, from their misdeeds. They have done nothing wrong. They've done an excellent job and they have performed well for a long, long time. And the only reorganization that was done was done well outside, over a year and a half ago, uh, well outside the, uh, the Thelma Stone Award. It, that wasn't even mentioned. And the very idea that someone would tie, try to take credit for something that had little or nothing to do with it just galls me something awful. And I'm motivated to speak, people know that I speak truthfully, I speak factually. Do I make mistakes? Yes, when I make mistakes, I apologize for them. But that, uh, that is not fair to the employees of this county. It's not fair to the elected officials to somehow give the impression that all these years of work and dedication to this county, that they have been doing the wrong thing. It is just not true. It's not true. And if anyone deserves an apology, it's the pe- the employees, uh, the elected officials, the people of this county, and most of all, Hazel Kennedy. Hazel Kennedy had more to do with winning that Thel- Thelma Stone Award than, than, uh, Commissioner Bloom. So I'm clarifying that, that people that's called me and said, what in the world are we gonna do? It's not true. The whole story was not true. Okay, uh, Mr. Music, Mr. Assessor, do you have anything?
Uh, just two deputies are out, still out in Clay County, finishing, you know, working from maps 11 on up. So, I mean, Clay District. You guys are waiting for me to crack that.
Well, I, I was just thinking maybe you're, uh, moonlighting or something.
Maybe more grants now, but, uh, that's where they're at and they'll work towards, uh, Star City and Union in September.
Thank you. We have any other elected officials here? Ron for Granville, you have anything for us?
No, sir.
Okay. Diane, you have anything?
Um, a report that Bobby and I attended the ribbon cutting yesterday at the Lewis County Judicial Center. It was very nice. They were very happy to see us. We were really representing you. Uh, very nice facility, probably a third of what we're going to have, maybe. The very nice ceiling was there, they showed us the court rooms, the decor was beautiful, very nice muted greens, the carpet, the woodworking, everything is just very, very nice. And I think we have that to look forward to when ours becomes reality during a couple of years.
Thank you. Bobby?
Yes.
Renata? Jamie?
No, sir.
Amazing.
Yeah.
I was waiting for that finger to go.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Um, comments from the public? Hearing done, do I have a motion adjourned?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
A motion, second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned 10 minutes and we'll come back for work session.